Very good. All right. I'd like to call this meeting of the Board of Education to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, thank you very much. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda? So move to move that. Okay, both it was Costin seconded by Mr. Downey. Mr. Downey, oh my God, Mr. Kelly, all in favor of the consent agenda. I can't see Christina Chu.
Hi, Joe, did you know we got secretly married?
Exactly.
I was unaware.
I'm so used to it. That passes seven zero. Okay. The election of officers is next on the agenda. I am going to make a motion to move it to later in the meeting. I'm going to make a motion to move the election of officers to, in the interest of knowing Michael Joseph's time, I'd say after the monthly reports. That should cover us. Does anyone want to second that? Okay, all in favor of moving it to later in the meeting to then? Okay, that passes seven zero again. I'm doing that. Yep, Christina said yes. That passes seven zero. Okay, again, I'm doing this like I did for the last meeting because I think it's only appropriate to have everyone present while you are choosing the election of the officers. So with that, let's go straight into our public hearing, and that is the Greenwich High School Student Government. Thank you, guys.
Can you hear me? All right, sounds good. Good evening, Board members and meeting attendees. My name is Mitch Goldstein, and I am the Student Body Vice President. Over the past month, the student government has concentrated on working with Mr. Nannarello and our executive chef to ensure a smooth transition from the government subsidized lunch program to a more traditional food service system. Signs have been posted around the school to inform students that the free lunch program is ending on January 3rd. Despite the ending of the free lunch program, students were happy to hear that lunch and breakfast prices have remained relatively similar to the pre-COVID pricing. Additionally, the Diversity Subcommittee has begun working with the Lunch Services Subcommittee to create a proposal for one themed signature dish that can be added to the menu each month in the second semester. With this addition, the student government aims to provide a more diverse and representative menu. On the note of food, the Senior Pie fundraiser has wrapped up, and we are proud to say that it was extremely successful. The proceeds from the fundraiser will help to fund items like the Senior Gift, scholarships from scholarships, and of course prom. And I'd like to also commend all of GHS as a because the students donated over 2,000 food items to support the Neighbor to Neighbor Thanksgiving Drive this year. I'd also like to address the GHS Entrance redesign program. I want to thank the board for approving the additional $500,000 needed to complete the project. And although the plans for the entrance way are not as extravagant as the ones that were initially proposed, what is most important is that actions are being taken place to improve student safety and security at the high school. And finally, I'd like to share some initial thoughts on the Freshman 113A Global Studies and English Courses at the GHS. Since its establishment, the Freshman 113A program has been offered without an honors designation, despite its significant rigor compared to the 113 and 112 counterparts. As courses are reviewed for the next academic year, students at the high school believe that it would be a great idea to add the honors GPA weighting to the Freshman 113A Global Studies and English Courses. On behalf of the student body, I want to thank you all for your time, and I wish you all happy holidays and a happy new year. I look forward to continuing to work with the board in the new year. And now I pass the microphone over to our Student Body President, Isabella Giga.
Thank you so much. Good evening, Chairman Stowe, Dr. Jones, members of the board and meeting attendees. I am Isabella Giga, Student Body President at Greenwich High School. During this holiday seeding season, 20 groups of students went back to their childhood roots and participated in the gingerbread contest last Tuesday evening. ExCom so tenaciously decided to participate in this competition. It was a great success. And I don't mean to brag, but we did go on to win second place. This contest was an excellent means to bring our school community together and enjoy the upcoming holiday season. We are currently brainstorming similar community building events for this spring, and we are looking forward to the holiday sweater contest tomorrow. To assist in these plans for the spring, our Student Events Subcommittee has met this month. In addition to our subcommittees from for flex advisor base, student concerns, communications, and food services have brought together students from across the school to come up with new ideas and address student needs. We continue to encourage all students to voice their opinions and share their feedback with ExCom and our Subcommittee Chairs. As 2022 comes to a close, we are grateful that our new Subcommittee structure has been established, and we are excited for what next semester brings. On a separate note, our Greenwich High School community has been blooming more than usual recently. We have enjoyed the holiday concerts produced by Band and Orchestra, and we are waiting the choir concert. The onstage musical is taking place this weekend as well. We're also proud of our three-state championship teams: boys golf, boys soccer, and most recently football. Our athletes, musicians, and actors continue to represent the best of our Cardinal community, and we are excited to celebrate their accomplishments. During December, as stressful as early decisions and early action results are for seniors, the school has continued to stick together. We have enjoyed our time together, and we are hopeful for a successful midterm exam period in January. As always, it is a pleasure, and I look forward to speaking with you in 2023. Thank you and enjoy the holidays.
Thank you so much, Isabella. Okay, up next, GEA. Is Lil here? Online? Let me. Anyone? You see her online? No?
I don't see her online.
Okay. Okay, so why don't we, we could always come back to her. Let's skip her PTAC. Are you here, Frances? Yes, thank you.
Good evening. I'm Frances Wu-Nobe, mom of three GPS kids and the 2022-2023 President of the Greenwich Parent Teacher Advisory Council. PTAC is a nonpartisan, nonprofit organization made up of a governing board of directors, presidents of all 15 school PTAs, and 17 powerhouse advisory committees covering all areas of school life. If you are ready to be more engaged in our schools, please join our school PTA today. We start tonight's remarks with a moment of silence. To honor the Newtown, Connecticut Sandy Hook Elementary School first graders, school principal, school psychologist, substitute teacher, first grade teacher, paraprofessional, behavioral therapist, and mom who tragically died 10 years ago on December 14, 2012. We stand with the Sandy Hook community to say we are Sandy Hook, we choose love. Turning to hot topics and tonight's consent agenda, PTAC highlights these ABCs for Board of Education consideration. A is for all together. Thank you to all those who ran, walked, strolled, and most importantly, donated to the Greenwich Alliance Thanksgiving Turkey Trot and their ongoing annual appeal for donations. All the money the alliance raises goes into programs in the Greenwich Public Schools. Thank you for your support and longtime partnership. B is for buildings and budgets. In particular, PTAC encourages all parents, taxpayers, and officials serving on town bodies to read GPS's latest Capital Projects update available on the GPS website. This update provides the factual basis for the costs, the process, the sizing for each of the major projects and other critical information. Still more questions? Please contact Bob Chaney, Dina Ursel, and other PTA presidents and Building Committee members who are speaking tonight. These are GPS parents volunteering to advocate for our infrastructure. You will also hear tonight from Angie PTAC Green Schools Committee. C is for curriculum and parent-teacher conferences. PTAC appreciates all the elementary school teachers, administrators, and parents who attended Patty Jomo's family engagement workshops and met to discuss our students' progress. For some parents, this may have been the first time they've been able to get into their children's school buildings in recent years, to see the art on the school walls, to see their children's desk. For the teachers and administrators, we appreciate the time you took to prepare and meet parents face to face. These are the kinds of events we need, events that help build a school community. For our secondary school families, marking period one report cards and marking period two progress reports have been published as we head towards January midterms. We work in partnership with you. In closing, to all the parents, teachers, administrators, nurses, custodial staff, paraprofessionals who support our Greenwich Public School students each and every day, PTAC hopes you get a chance to rest and recharge, play a board game, drink some hot chocolate, enjoy family and friends. As we end 2022 and get ready for 2023, thank you for all you do. Have a happy and healthy holiday season.
Thank you, Frances. You as well. Up next, we're going to go back to you, Lil, please. Yes, you're up now. Thank you.
Good evening. Sorry the reindeer had to take a little pit stop. All right. Good evening, Dr. Jones, Chairman Stowe, Board of Education members, GPS staff, students, and parents. I'm in an extremely good mood tonight. Oop, my phone don't get finicky on me now. I had a much longer speech planned for this evening, but thanks to collaboration with Dr. Jones and administration as professionals coming to the table and working together to do what is best for our students. So I didn't know. I was either gonna, you know, sing a song or do a poem, but I decided to do a little poem. 'Twas the night before budget when all through the town hall, not a member was stirring, not even BET, RTM, and them all. The lesson plans were hung by the chimney with care and hopes that GEA president Lillen Perone would soon be there. The teachers were nestled and all snug in their beds with visions of snow days danced in their heads. Caro Billow and her kerchief, D'Amico and his cap, had just settled down for a long school year nap. When out of the lawn there arose such a clatter, I sprang to my office to see what was the matter. Away to the window I flew like a flash, tore open the shutters and threw up the sash. The moon on Greenwich Ave of new fallen snow gave the luster of midday to objects below. When what that wondering eye should appear but a miniature sleigh and eight tiny bored deers? With two little drivers so lively with snow, I knew in a moment it must be Kelly and Stowe. More rapid than eagles, and course they both came, and they whistled and shouted and called them by name. Now Cody, now Karen, now Costin and Hirsch, Michael Joseph, Dr. Jones, and butted them all to the top of Havemire, to the top of the wall, with the sleigh full of chrome books to give to us all. And then in a twinkle I heard on the roof the prancing and pawing of each of their little hoofs. As I drew my hand and was turning around, down Greenwich Avenue they all came abound. Dressed all in fur from head to toe was Stowe and Hirsch in their Gucci, all covered in snow. Kelly with toys he had flung on his back, and he looked like a peddler just opening his pack. And I laughed when I saw him and spied on myself, a wink of his eye and a twist of his head soon gave me to know I had nothing to dread. I spoke not a word but straight to work. I filled all the staff stockings, then turned with a jerk, laying a finger on my nose aside, laying a finger aside to my nose and giving a nod to the board as I rose. I sprang to the sleigh, to the board team gave a whistle. Away they all flew down of a thistle. But I heard them exclaim as they drove out of sight, "Happy holidays to all and to all a good night." Have a great break.
Well.
Guess I have a new side job, huh?
That's wonderful. I can see you. You must have been a wonderful teacher, fun and very intelligent. That's wonderful. Thank you so much. Okay, good way to end that part of the public hearing. Now we're going into the community comments, although we only have four, so this should be good. And I'm pulling it up. Okay, first up, and I'm getting this right, Angie Hartofalas.
Well done. Dear Board of Ed members, I hope that everyone is doing well. My name's Angie Hartofalas, and I'm the PTAC Green Schools Co-Chair. Tonight, I just wanted to give a brief update on what the Green Volunteers have been doing across the district. I'm pretty proud of the team. The Green Schools Group focused on the theme of recycling for November and into the month of December. Schools ran battery recycling drives, clothing drives, Trex Recycling Program, which recycles the soft plastics, which do not go into the main recycling stream, and a school spiritware hand-me-down exchange. Earlier today, we collaborated with Waste Free Greenwich and our town's Conservation Commission as they put on a webinar to share practices and tips to green your holiday celebration. To date, we have fully launched the Zero Waste Initiative at New Lab and OGS with a 42% cut in waste reduction. Riverside is also up and running. The Organics Hauling Pilot at New Lab will commence in late January. This pilot is at no cost as we secured the funding from the BET via the mini bottle bill. We appreciate the collaboration with facilities to bring this to fruition. Central Middle School just finished three days of volunteers helping the students sort and are now up and running with bins, signage, videos, and trainings complete. EMS and ISD have their green team schools, have had their green team schools meetings, and have started to get things in place looking to fully launch in early January. North Myannis and Parkway are next on our list for early winter, and then we have six schools, not counting the high school, we're gonna tackle that later, to complete before the end of this school year. We are making progress as we are a dedicated group of volunteers working towards the goal of reducing waste, but we do need the Board of Ed support for next month when we present our updated proposal for the Zero Waste Initiative in Greenwich Public Schools. The top-down support is the missing link here, and we need your help to make this happen. We have emailed each of you on the board. We appreciate the support and communication from Joe Kelly and Christina Downey. We would like engagement with all of the board members and the superintendent prior to the January Board of Ed meeting so we can address any questions and increase your understanding and awareness. I would like to say thank you for your time, and I wish you all really well this holiday season. Thanks.
Thank you, Angie. Apparently, I still got your last name wrong, but so anyway, a little closer, exactly. Okay, next up is Dina Ursel, followed by Bob Chaney.
Good evening, Dr. Jones, Chairwoman Stowe, and members of the Board of Education. My name is Dina Ursel, and I am here on behalf of the CMS. PTA is one of its co-presidents. Jen Behet, my co-president, is listening in virtually and joins in my comments. She and I have been following the press coverage in Building Committee meetings that have recently taken on a tone of what can only be described as friction in recent weeks. It is our hope that politics and ego stay out of the fray and that you, as the Board of Education, continue to hold steadfast to the ed specs that have already been approved. Do not be distracted by what the end goal has always been, to build the right-sized building for this project, not only for the short term, but for several decades to follow. During this week's Building Committee meeting, there was discussion and comments that the ed specs may be revisited. With all due respect, it took months to approve the ones that the Building Committee currently has. A company was hired last winter who spent many hours talking to CMS teachers and administrators. They based the ed specs on what these professionals believe this school building is lacking and how it could be made into a better place. Things like adding more room to classrooms to make them more in line with current trends in the education field and not having to use closet space to deliver instructions like they presently do. To revisit the ed specs now would mean that CMS could end up with the same issues that this building has, but with just a prettier, newer veneer, essentially a pig with lipstick, if you will. For those of you listening in who are curious to learn more, we encourage you to review the recently released GPS Capital Projects update as well as the CMS dedicated page on the GPS website. This should absolutely be a project for the town as a whole to be proud of. Ultimately, however, it is the students of CMS, whether they be current or future, for whom we advocate. Please do not forget that this is above all else about them and their education. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Dina. Next up, Bob Chaney, followed by Greg Piccignino.
Good evening. My name is Bob Chaney, and I'm speaking this evening as a concerned parent of a student and future student at Central Middle School. I don't think I have to tell you that there's been a lot of misinformation floating around in the last few weeks regarding the Central Middle School project. Since this misinformation is already out in the public, I thought I would counter said misinformation with a few facts as to why I think Central Middle School needs to move forward with the current size and scope of the ed specs. It's my understanding that there are members of the BET that want to shrink the size of the Central Middle School project. This is not acceptable. Central Middle School, in its current size, already has issues with having enough space to properly teach the students. Just a few examples are multiple classes being taught in the media center simultaneously, storage rooms, closets being used for classrooms with the items that are supposed to be in the storage moved elsewhere, which brings us to the boys locker room and the gymnasium that's not been able to be used for years due to having said storage stored within its walls. Look, this school was built in the 1950s. They didn't allocate for special ed space or a large media center or larger classrooms. The rooms here are only 600 square feet, much smaller than the classrooms that are being designed now. With the average classroom size being 24 students, the rooms in the new school need to be at least 800 square feet. But these examples are why Central Middle School needs every inch of space and every dollar in the already approved ed specs to move forward with this project. A quick side note, I actually ran this speech by my guy who attends Central Middle School, and he wanted me to go to the mattresses for a playground. And I said, you know what? I think we might have a lot of other issues to settle before we tackle that playground. So you're welcome. I'm not going to advocate for that tonight. But in closing, my thought is this: We need to plan for the future of Greenwich Public Schools and specifically Central Middle School. I think that the current ed specs allow this. As Dina just said, we need to stick to our guns and move forward with the already approved ed specs. We need to build a school for the future of Greenwich, not dwell in the past. Thank you and have a good night.
Thank you very much. Final speaker, Greg Piccignino.
Hi, I prepared comments, but before I go there, I just want to say one of the reasons why I volunteered for the Central Middle School Building Committee is because the GPS system's been extremely important to my family. And a few hours ago, my son texted me and told me he's now a research scholar in biology at his university, which is extremely rare for a freshman, and I thank the GPS community for giving him the tools. And that's sort of why I'm here today. So I'm Greg Piccignino. I'm a resident of Riverside. I am a member of the CMS Building Committee, and I volunteered to be on this Building Committee to ensure that we build an appropriate school for the community to meet the 21st century educational needs while holding to the town's commitment towards fiscal discipline. I believe the educational component of the ed specs achieve those dual and sometimes conflicting aims. I understand the educational curriculum is based on a two-team system, and the ed specs provide a bit of flexibility for a building that will be used for the next 50 years, long after I've left this earth. Speaking as a resident of the Greenwich community, I'm hearing more and more people talk about the school being too big, the need to reduce the size to something slightly larger than CosCon Elementary, which I know is inadequate for a middle school, and it's fiscally irresponsible to build such a building. Therefore, I'm asking the Board of Education to produce an analysis as to why the August 11th ed specs are as they are in very simple terms that the community can readily understand. Tell us why we need a school of 1,500 square feet versus one that would be 80,000 square feet. I think once the community understands what this really means, I'm sure the majority will support this effort. It's my personal view is that an 80,000-square-foot school means current CMS homes are going to be bust, and this is very important for us to know. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, that concludes our public hearing. We now go to monthly reports. Dr. Jones, can you kick us off?
Yes, thank you. First of all, I want to congratulate Suzanne Coyne, who was announced this week as the Assistant Principal of the Year for Connecticut, and we are so excited for her. We'll bring her in front of the board also, but we just are so excited. She does tremendous work. And, you know, the committee was so complimentary and said that she's probably one of the most humble assistant principals that they have met after they heard all these different committees talk about her. So congratulations to Suzanne Coyne. Also this week, we had other good news, and we have four elementary schools, which are schools of distinction this year, and that's based off of the end-of-year results from last year. We're congratulating Riverside, ISD, New Lebanon, and North Street School, which means they're in the top 10% of the state, and they also cannot have an achievement gap from the way that the state calculates in English Language Arts or Mathematics. So very, very exciting for those four schools. I was present for the football state championship. It was cold, but boy, it was certainly, certainly fun. And I see Karen Kowalski and Joe were right up by where sitting by where I was as well. I'm sure they would concur it was cold. I did see somebody in shorts, I have to say. I was shocked, but and I don't have to wear a coat. For Eastern Middle School, they have a brand-new robotics team, and the robotics team won first in state last weekend as well, and that's for their design of their robot. So that was very exciting, especially for a brand-new team. We did send out a Western Middle School update. I know it is on the agenda tonight. I'll give you a little bit more information, but huge strides moving forward there. We're really excited about that. And I know that Frances mentioned that the Capital Newsletter went out. If you didn't get a chance to read it, it really is very, very helpful. We generally put that out quarterly, and we try to hit on all of the major projects so that our TM members, BET members, everybody can get caught up in our community as a large on all of those projects. We also had a question from PTA, and I just want to share it since I'm giving comments tonight, about the flu. At what point do we notify parents? Because we do have the flu, RSV, and COVID all kind of simultaneously happening right now. In an elementary classroom where kids are together all day, if we have one student who has been positive with the flu, that's considered an outlier. If we get two students, it's considered a contagion. And so then the nurse of that elementary school makes sure they send a note to all of the parents. And if there are four cases, it's considered an outbreak. So that's how the notification works to families. So if you haven't received a note, then that's a good thing. That means it's, you know, not kind of going through your classroom. I also just want to mention that we did get information just late tonight on the waiver process from the state of Connecticut for the Science of Reading. So we will start working on that. The submission is in February, so we're going to have to work very, very quickly. And I'll inform the board a little bit more once we have a chance to really understand what they're asking us to do. And that's all for me.
Thank you. Any, okay, so I'll give it now to everyone else. Committee reports. Go ahead, Joe.
I will go quick with the JC Building Committee. We have put together, we've met a couple of times now. It's a great bunch of folks. And we put together a design for the RFP, for asking for an architect to bid on the different components and a staged aspect of improving the building, making it ADA compliant and making it secure, the front entrance to be more secure. And we're gonna put the RFP out and have an architect phase the project so we don't build things now that, as we improve that old building, we have to rip out what we're improving. We want a comprehensive plan on how to design the building. So therefore, when we put the elevator in, it's in a smart spot that we don't have to take it out or move it or put a different one in. So we worked on that RFP. We were gonna meet tomorrow if we needed to talk about it, but everybody on the committee just agreed. It looks satisfactory, and we're moving forward.
Thank you. All right, Ms. Costin.
We are the Central Middle School Building Committee. Thank you all for speaking about this important project. We are hopeful that the contract will be signed by both parties and that we can get a pen to paper for a design.
Ms. Downey, you apparently have updates.
Yes, hi. Good evening. Just in terms of the high school entryway project. unanimously approved $500,000 at their meeting last night, so it now will go before the RTM in January for their approval. In the meantime, the committee continues to work on refining the design from what we saw in terms of the details with the eye towards being in front of PMZ and any approvals we'd need for that in the month of January. After that is done, work out the timing, it'll ultimately come back to us for a final approval of the final design and the authorization to go into the state and go out to bid.
Christina, who was it that you said voted unanimously last night? We missed that.
The BET, the BET.
Thank you.
The full BET, the full BET did. It was on their consent agenda, is my understanding. So that's the high school. In terms of the budget committee, we did have one meeting after our last meeting to talk a little bit about ARP, but also to really talk about staffing related issues. It was a productive discussion, but so vis a vis the ARP, I know we had originally thought we were going to be voting on it tonight, but Blaze, he can chime in, was in touch with, I think Roland, who said that we should vote on it. We'll probably vote on it in January or February. It just needs to be able to be approved by the BET when they vote at end of March, beginning of April. So then it'll move along as part of the budget process with the BET and the RTM in the spring. Blaze, is that correct?
He said, yes, I'm sure he can give us more later.
I think I've got it right. So and then that's it for my two.
Okay. Michael Joseph.
So let me put another plug in for the Capitol Newsletter. I really did think that was fantastic, especially since you know, it is unprecedented time where we have four active building committees. For our part, the old Greenwich Building Committee continues to move a pace. We received our bids for the architecture. We unsealed those, the architects, we unsealed those last week. We received eight bids, which was fantastic, more than really we thought we were going to expect. So it was a real pleasant surprise that eight different, really high quality firms bid on the project. We'll be meeting next week to score those. And we're still, and then interviewing shortly after the holidays, still on track hopefully to bring to the full board a suggested architect to hire in our January business meeting.
Okay, Cody, did you have? No. All right, Karen? Did you have any updates? Committee updates? Okay, I did have one since I was had the pleasure of sitting with Excom this week. And I think that 113A was a wonderful thing that you guys raised and you talked a little bit about it tonight. But also I understand that the students had advocated for the midterms, going back to the policy that we had during COVID and that the decision was made at the high school to go back to the pre-COVID allocation. And for what it's worth, I think that they made a good argument and I think it's something that we should continue to discuss because I know that was something they advocated for and I know a lot of students felt strongly about it previously. So go ahead. Yeah, that's fine. That's all I had.
So I know we're not there yet, but just out of curiosity, does that mean that they're not giving them that support for midterms? Is that what the understanding was?
So no, they're giving them, do you want me to answer that or do you?
Since I wasn't at that meeting.
Okay, so they're giving, they changed the schedule a little bit. No, what they're doing is they're going back to the fact where it's 25, 25, sorry, 20, 20, 20, 20, 10, 10 for midterm finals, whereas last year, as you might recall, it was like a 5-10 option, right? So whatever was better for the student. So they are going back to it no longer being like sort of the choice.
So you're saying pre-COVID or the first year of COVID that we had? Because we didn't have midterms then. That's why I meant.
Sorry, pre-COVID, yes. So, you know, so anyway, I think that it's, they raised it. I wasn't aware of it and I think it was just important for us all to hear that as a result.
Yeah, thank you for sharing that because it was always my understanding when we had that discussion that it was going to continue for the students going forward for a couple of years.
So I think that maybe that's something we need to add or to the next agenda. Of course, these midterms are coming up in January. So it's important we figure that out. Okay. So anything else? Okay, seeing none. And now on the agenda, I'm going to the election of officers, which as you all recall is in accordance with policy 9121. I'm getting good at running this election. So this is, the floor is now open for nominations for chair. I am going to nominate someone. First, let me just start off with, this has been an interesting extra month as chair for me. I was trying to come up with an analogy for our students and I thought it felt a bit like school was just called because of an unexpected snowstorm. And you now had an extra time to finish up your, like that one big project you were hoping for. The adult analogy for me is that, you know, have an extra week to shop for Christmas or your holiday. So in the past month, we managed to, I just heard some of the great things that have happened, right? Fall championships with football, soccer, golf, four schools of distinction. And kicking off the process for Western Middle School, field remediation is just great. So I feel like it's a great way to move on. And with that, I'm looking forward to passing the baton and I'd like to nominate Joe Kelly for chair. Just as a little background, which I think all of you know, Joe has four children. They all went through Greenwich Public Schools with his daughter set to graduate this very year. I think we all know Joe has many accomplishments professionally and in the community. What I like most about Joe is he's willing to always roll up his sleeves and help. Whether it's helping to get the stadium fixed, pull some weeds, or get a teacher contract negotiated. He gives it his all and he does it with a great attitude. Of course, he's also a famous coach, investor, father, husband to Jill, and I think he's been a wonderful colleague and I really look forward to passing this on to Joe. So with that, I should ask, are there any other nominations? Okay, seeing none. If you could write who you're voting for on your pads, pass them to me. And Christina Downey, since you are online, can you please email me out of my board email and copy Michael Onsenasio? All right, Christina Downey for Joe Kelly for chair. Karen Kowalski for Joe Kelly for chair. Laura Costin for Joe Kelly, Joe Kelly for Joe Kelly. Kathleen Stowe for Joe Kelly. Karen Hirsch for Joe Kelly. Cody Kittle for Joe Kelly and Michael Joseph for Joe Kelly. So that passes 8-0. Congratulations, Joe. I am going to move my seat. You want me to, I can run the next election for you. You have to give me that authority, Joe.
I think legally he may have to though.
Okay.
If I have to give you that authority, I shall.
I think, okay. You could hear Joe, why don't you just open the nominations for chair? Open the nominations for vice chair.
Okay, I'd like to open the nominations for vice chair. Do I hear any nominations? Michael?
I'd like to nominate Christina Downey for the role of vice chair. The, my fellow Riverside resident, Christina Downey. The, so Christina's work ethic and dedication to the board and the students of, the students and families in our whole community here of Greenwich is no stranger to any of us. The all three of her children attended Greenwich School. She's been a volunteer for GPS since 1999. She's been a member of the RTM End Committee. She's been a member of the Junior League, but then on the board, she's been in charge of policy and negotiations and served on two building committees. And it's my real pleasure to nominate her for the role of vice chair.
Excellent. Thank you for that. Are there any other nominations? Any other nominations? Last time, any other nominations? We have one nomination. Now can we then submit the votes? Do you want to count the votes or would you like me to count the votes?
I think you can do this.
I think I can do it.
But so now Christina, can you email Joe and copy Michael Onsenasio? Because we then have to actually hand these over to the town clerk by within 24 hours, our written ballots. That's why we do this. They write it in stone, I believe.
Michael Joseph, we have Christina Downey. We have Cody Kittle, Christina. We have Kathleen Stowe, Christina. We have Karen Hirsch, Christina. We have Laura Costin, Christina. We have me, Christina. And we have one abstain, Karen Kowalski. And we had it 7-0-1. Yes.
So can you run the secretary?
Do we have any nominations for secretary? Go ahead.
I would like to nominate Karen Hirsch once again for secretary. She does such a great job. And she can participate in a meeting and type minutes of a meeting and who else could really do that?
Okay, any other nominations?
Please tell me there's another nomination. Anyone? Anyone?
Any other nominations? Last time, any other nominations? They are closed. Please submit your ballot. Karen Hirsch, she votes for herself. Michael Joseph, Hirsch. Cody Kittle, Karen H. Kathleen Stowe, Karen H. Karen Kowalski, Karen Hirsch. Laura Costin, Karen Hirsch. And myself, Karen Hirsch, unanimous, 8-0-0.
She probably voted for Christina, for Karen. Okay.
I emailed it. Mike should have it.
I thought I might have to bring my own hammer, but I get to use your hammer. That is cool. And Kathleen, may I say, thank you for that nomination. That was very nice of you. Those are very kind words. I appreciate that. And I do appreciate the one year that you served as a board chair. Also, of course, the two years we worked together prior to that, which we forged a, not just a working relationship, but a friendship. And I do appreciate the fact that we did do that and I was happy to have you exceed, I would think, most people's expectations in serving as the board chair. So thank you very much for the fine job you did. You seem to find compromise when needed. Because in a 4-4 board compromise is necessary because a good board is a board that makes decisions. So, and I think we made a lot of decisions over that time. So thank you for your service.
Thank you very much, Joe.
Thank you. And everyone who voted for me, thank you for your trust and your faith that I could serve as our board chair. I will do my best. I will try to make sure that all members of this board's voices are heard and that their opinion is listened to. Not always will we be able to give everybody what they want in a 4-4 board compromise is necessary. A functional board is a board that makes decisions. And we will be, and I will advocate for making decisions and hopefully those decisions are made in an 8-0 manner. So we're all working together in cooperation. And I'm glad that the other positions were achieved in an almost unanimous manner, showing that this board is a board that can work together. It's been a very long time. I checked the history. It's been a very long time since officers of this board have been done unanimously. Well, of course, secretary is always unanimously because we have such a fine secretary. But the other positions over the past decade or so, even more than that, it's been almost impossible to achieve unanimous voting. So thank you for everyone for having the faith in the candidates which they voted for unanimously. So then that being said, and also Kathleen, if I do stumble in my board procedure, please correct me immediately and I'll be happy to have those corrections, but I'll try my best to operate as efficiently as possible.
Sure, you got this.
Okay, we're going to have a discussion about Central Middle School. Can we have the update from Dr. Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Kelly, and congratulations. So the building committee is hard at work. They're moving very, very quickly. You know, they're meeting on a weekly basis and those of you that are on the building committee, obviously Lauren can speak to that at much greater detail than I can. I will say, we tried to take all of the questions that we are really hearing from the community, put as many of those in the Capitol Newsletter this week. And probably one question that I hear the most, whether that's PTA or just, you know, in general, people wanting to know, where does the dollar amount come from? Because it was $1 amount last year. It's a different dollar amount this year. But again, it's just an estimate and that's pretty much what we said, you know, in the Capitol Newsletter, it's an estimate. Until we actually get a design and we really go out to bid, we don't know exactly how much it's going to cost, but that estimate number comes from 115,000 square feet, which is just slightly bigger than this building is now, pretty, almost the same size, fraction more. And then that's number 700. I want to commend the building committee because when they put out the RFP, they ask those who are going to respond to the RFP to basically with no commitment, but to tell the committee what they believe the construction cost at that point in time was out in the market. And when you take the six companies that responded, the average was right at $698 a square foot. And then again, if you go and take those same six, you throw out the high and you throw out the low, it's still $698 a square foot. So you really have six very competitive teams that are building out in the field that are telling us right now that that's what they believe the cost would be at $700 a square foot. But as you know, construction changes. By the time you go out to bid, it could be higher, it could be lower. And if you remember with Eastern Civic Center, that was kind of more in the height of COVID, closer to $900 a square foot. So I think we're lucky. The market's actually coming down right now. So again, that's where that number comes from. So that's been, I think, a number that some people have been confused about and that's why they've asked for clarification. But if people have questions, please ask us and we'll do our very best as we do these updates to make sure we answer them as clearly as possible and in a very practical way. So you don't have to have a background in construction to understand. So the building committee again is meeting a lot and definitely a huge commitment on behalf of that committee.
Thank you, Dr. Jones. That was excellent, very comprehensive. Anyone have any questions about the Central Middle School update? I see none. If we're okay with them, we'll move on to the next topic, which is Western Middle School, the soil update.
Very excited about where we are as of today on the Western Soil Remediation Project. We did send out a note earlier in the week, just so people will be watching tomorrow. The comment period, public comment period will open. We will have the public posting for comment period and also for the hearing. We will start getting all of that out there. So people can comment on what's called the RAP, the Remedial Action Plan. And you'll be able to see a picture of basically what the field's going to look like. You'll have a better understanding for those who really want to read the detail. AECOM and Langen do all of those documents for us. So we know that they're correct from a technical standpoint. On January the 11th, we will host the actual public hearing. And those of you who attended the one for GHS probably remember it'll be at Western Middle School. It will start out most likely in a cafeteria or gym area with tables set up so that people can move around, ask the regulators questions, be able to look at pictures, but have more of an independent time so that if somebody really wants to get in but have more of a, uh, independent time so that if somebody really wants to get into the detail, the right people are there so they can actually get their answers. From there, we will move into the auditorium, which we expect probably around seven o'clock. It's, uh, the agenda's in draft right now. We're firming that up. Um, the public comment period, period will start and they really do want to hear, um, that the community does or does not support, um, the remediation remedial action plan. I have a feeling we're going to have a lot of support just based off what I'm hearing. Um, and the feeling I've had in the couple of years I've been here, this is a really important project. So after that, once we get through the comment period, we get through, uh, the public hearing, then we'll be preparing to, it'll be getting the bid ready to go out to bid. And again, AECOM and Langen are working together, um, on this project and AECOM is going to manage the bid portion and also the scoring portion for us, which they did for the high school as well.
Thank you. Any questions? Michael?
How are we, because the public comment is so important, how are we messaging that out about the need for public comment?
So we send that to everybody in the community. First of all, we also try to send it to like our elected officials. Um, then we, on our Friday note, which everybody gets, you know, in the district, it'll be in there again tomorrow, as well as Western is pushing it out, um, making sure their community is highly engaged. Uh, we're also connecting with, we want to make sure that Public Works, you know, is fully aware of all of these states because this is a really important project for them. Um, but we're, there, there are even, um, athletic, you know, groups in town that this is such an important project because of the limit that we have, we just don't have enough fields as it is. And this is going to be such an enhancement for the entire community that there's, um, we're trying to get it out to everybody that we can.
Karen?
Will you also be, I know when with the high school, we had the, uh, huge signs up, uh, outside. Um, you know, and I know there were notices in all the newspapers as well. I assume you'll be doing the same.
Yes, and the newspaper notice is actually required for us. So that will, all of that will happen as well.
And just because it is such a diverse, uh, community with, uh, multiple languages spoken, I, I'm going to hope that all of those will be done in multiple languages.
Good point. Thank you.
Thank you.
Laura?
Just a quick question. Um, I think I remember with the high school, they also had an extended, um, period of time where you could email. You didn't just have to go one day. Is that going to be still how it is?
So the comment period will open tomorrow between now and the hearing date and we'll be sending those to the regulators so that, you know, and also Langen and AECOM so that the presentation can also be sure we answer as many of those questions as possible. After that, and after the public hearing, the comment portion stays open, uh, for X amount of weeks after that time. And it, and it goes straight to the regulator.
Thank you.
Tony, could you bring me through? Cause we went through a similar stage with the high school, with the remediation of the high school. Uh, it, we didn't know back then because it was the first time we got to what we realized at that point to be the finish line. Uh, what was the timeframe of the high school when they came to the stage versus breaking ground and starting the remediation process? Compared to where we are with the, uh, uh, Western Middle School right now?
You know, I would have to pull the timeline exactly. What I can tell you is it took us at least 10 years before we really were getting the, um, submission to join the voluntary program and then to actually get the rep together. So it, it's well over a decade and then it's a multi-stage project because you're dealing with lots of different fields where it can only be done in the summer. Good thing about Western, at least this is one area. It's not as large as it, as at the high school. It's a little bit different project.
Well, to not scare people, I guess my point was a, a little bit different than that was. I remember being in this room, uh, speaking on behalf of the High School Remediation Program, uh, to the state officials. And the timeframe between those presentations and those discussions, uh, was not 10 years. That was, if you remember, that was probably six months, if I remember correctly.
Right. After we have the actual, um, public comment portion and they get all the feedback, you know, from the community, from those who, um, you know, weigh in on the action plan. That's why we then get ready to go out to build. So, you know, I, I'm hesitant to say, well, we could have a shovel in the ground in the summer because it all depends on the bid process. And it depends on, uh, things like we've experienced challenges at the high school, uh, where the soil is going to go because all the places that will take this type of soil for a while were full. So they're going to be dealing with all of that, but it definitely is, um, we're, we're getting to the finish line as far as getting a shovel in the ground.
So the home stretch, we'll call it. We're getting closer. Okay. And also too, if I can, uh, ask my fellow board members, because I like, I don't like leaving things to chance. Is there somebody of, of the members of the board right now that, uh, Tony, you include them in all your communications and all your networking? So that way we have a board person involved in the making sure that we get the word out on this to, is there any board member that could take this challenge on?
I'd be very happy as a former Western parent to help, uh, in that role of making sure that the Western community is very aware.
Thank you very much. So, uh, Tony, could you include, uh, Karen Hirsch into all your communications and your strategy to get this information out? Uh, so she could, uh, communicate with us and use us as resources, uh, as well, which I'm happy. Uh, Karen, I'd be happy if you need me to do something as well. Please inform me. Thank you. Uh, Blaze now, financial staffing report.
Uh, good evening, everybody. Congratulations to the new officers. Um, nothing. So right now, just the financial report, um, nothing major to report out of the ordinary right now. You can see that we're, um, on trend basically from, you know, where we were historically, we're monitoring closely. The, uh, special education, um, out of district tuition settlement. Um, currently Stacy's doing a great job with getting every single possible settlement encumbered. Um, right now there is, even though the, um, settlement line is currently overdrawn, some of the out of district tuition, um, is going down. She's still, you know, we're watching it closely, but when we spoke at our meeting on Friday about that point, she's still, um, comfortable with where we're at now. Um, obviously anything can happen with special education, but that's one of the major areas. The school lunch, uh, funding program has, is lasting a little bit longer. So it looks like it should last us through the end of the month. And then we'll run out of our last bit of the, uh, universal free lunch funding. Um, and otherwise, everything else, I'll take any questions. I think everything else was, was fairly straightforward.
Questions?
I have one when you get to them, Joe.
Oh, please go ahead.
Uh, Blaze, thanks. Um, just two questions and these may have come up before. Um, on the exhibit, which talks about our operating contracts above a hundred thousand, it feels like we have some contracts which are listed multiple times, like Effective School Solutions. We also have two different contracts for transportation of students for athletics. Um, so could you just kind of explain why we have them listed up on multiple lines and?
Yeah. So the, it's, it's two different contracts with the same vendor when you see it. So like total transportation. The first one is the, uh, just the pure contract that we have with them for the transportation of students. And the second one is the contract we have with them that's specific to the transportation of, uh, for students for athletics. So it's
But we have DATCO also for transportation for athletics. So what's the difference?
We do. Yeah, we have two different contracts. They're both over a hundred thousand, um, in, in pre-encumbered value. And they use multiple transportation vendors depending on the schedule to move all the students around.
So we basically, because one company can't really service all our needs for that. Is that correct?
Yeah. And we actually have a third company that we use for athletics because we just had an incident, for example, where neither, uh, Total or DATCO is able to provide the, the transportation for the championship game.
Okay, got, um, and then like, so, and so for like the Effective School Solutions, we just have two contracts for two different types of services that they're providing. Is that why we have two?
That, that's correct. Yeah, one is at Western, um, Anne's telling me, and the other one's at the high school. So it's two different services. And this actually, you will keep seeing a little bit of changes because as we finish through our, um, procurement audit that we're doing with internal audit at the town, um, we're, we're getting this area, um, you know, following some different process. We're making a couple of revisions to the purchasing manual. So you'll keep seeing exhibit one to change a little bit as we, as we go through that.
Awesome. Thank you. Um, and then one other question, and it's been something I've been meaning to ask for a long time and I keep forgetting to, but remember tonight. Sorry. Um, our capital status summary, I mean, we, we have listed in there projects that are complete. Right? So it's kind of a, a funny thing that we're missing them that are complete, but they're complete. And shouldn't they be just kind of like, at what point do they come off? Um, the list, right? It's kind of, you know, because then it creates artificial numbers that we have more projects on there that are, you know, we keep always talking about our, reducing our open capital. So I don't know if you have any thoughts on managing that?
Yeah, it's, it's a great question. Um, the reason, and we can remove some from the report or change the way it looks, but the way that the town appropriates capital, um, it's, it's in bundles. So Dan has it listed out so that you can see all the specific projects in here that are within each bundle. Um, so there might be like, let's say six sub-accounts under the, actually, if you take painting, there's probably 15 projects that are within painting, but painting in 2023, um, that can't be closed out until 100% of the bundle is done. So say we're through 70% of the project and we would actually return $10,000 by the time we're done. We can't return the full funds and have the account closed until everything within that bundle is complete. It's something that I
That totally makes sense, but it's just like, I guess the question is, is it making our reporting look funky, right? Because we have all these things that are done. Um, actually complete, but it looks artificially high.
Yeah, I think we can try to revise the way that we look at it for people. I think that's a good idea. I think it's important to still keep the number for you so that you know when, when other board members throughout town are looking at the open capital number. That is the one that they will see from other departments that produce the report. So at least you know where it's coming from. But we can improve the view so you can see the difference between the two, if that makes sense.
Okay, thank you.
Well, just one thing real quickly, if I may, on that same topic, uh, I will say I agree with Christina in the, in the fact that the presentation, uh, for us feeling we're accomplishing something, having it fall off the sheet just feels so much better for us. So that, that's, uh, that's why I, I think Christina's point's a good one. So we have to have possibly two sheets, what the, uh, uh, what you're saying, your presentation is necessary in order to keep things bundled and also for us to feel we're accomplishing something. So I think that's a great suggestion by Christina. And Christina, one thing as well, uh, I don't see you, so just speak up when you'd like to speak and I'll recognize you from you speaking up. So sorry, I, I didn't really see you very well. You're a little small.
No, no, that's okay. My raspy voice. I'm sorry.
No problem.
And to feel, just to add on, before we move on to the next question, uh, in terms to feel accomplishing on something, we did add on the summary of the report. Um, so month over month, you'll see that, uh, Dan's team executed $600,000 in capital month over month. So we're going to keep reporting that, but you know, that is a pretty significant activity.
Thank you. And Karen, you have a question?
Uh, just a couple. Um, it, I think we have a fourth transportation company, Happy Hour for Kids, Inc. And its account description is S E S S Transportation. What is that related to?
That's the special education, uh, student services transportation contract that they have.
So will that be a, a reoccurring expense going forward? It's, I realize it's only, it's a hundred, it's over a hundred thousand. So we get it. So it's a, it's a monthly expense that we're getting. And so does that fall within our special education budget or do our transportation budget?
That's within special education and that cost is the annual cost and we pay it down on a partial PO. So we encumber for most of these contracts, when we do a contract, we encumber the full amount upfront. And then we pay it down through partial payments as we get the invoice and actuals every month. One of the things that my team's working on adding to this report, for example, is the full contract amount so that we can see the original and then the amount liquidated to date so far. So you could see, let's say, if we've paid Happy Hour for Kids, um, you know, 30% of that contract so far, then you can see that, but that's how that pays down.
Yeah, I think that'd be helpful because I, I know that focused on learning is a reoccurring, uh, vendor that we see on here for various amounts, I think, related to professional development, but yet it's confusing as to whether this is one contract, if there are multiple contracts and how we're all paying them down on a, and, and what that adds up to. So that, I think that's, that would be an excellent add. I appreciate it. Um, the other question I had is in regards to the shipment in Goodwin Legal Services. I realize that that is for the special education. So does that, uh, similarly to my other transportation question, does that come out of the special ed budget, budget? Or does it come out of our legal expenditure budget? Because I, if I recall correctly, our legal spend in the budget for last year is, I, I think around $150,000. So I'm curious if that comes out of that line item or if it comes out of the special ed budget.
It comes out of the special ed budget for this one. And on the other one too, you'll see, uh, focused on learning is actually one of the ones that next month you'll see a, I believe you'll see a different number that's more comprehensive with a more comprehensive contract for focus on learning.
Perfect. Thank you.
Anyone else? You're still in the hot seat Blaze. We have, uh, American Rescue Plan.
So the main thing here on American Rescue Plan, um, uh, two weeks ago, we just talked about, I think a helpful view was we had the dollars broken out over each fiscal year, but we added in the actual FTE that that translates into original budget to revised budget. So here for informational purposes, you can see, um, on the first page, the goal there was just to break down the actual FTE and how that, why the dollars look the way they do. Um, from, I think from fiscal 22, I would say is the most notable difference. That's what we were also talking about um, on December 1st. And you'll see there a note basically that at the time it was originally anticipated that a number of these positions would be charged to S R three, the ARP allocation. And they ended up being charged to a different COVID, uh, relief funding bill that was provided as we were receiving a number of COVID relief bills and that was in S R two. And so that's the primary reason you see the 17.0 in the original budget versus the 7.8 actual. And that aligns to, you'll see that the teacher sped in row two was a 3.5 to a 3.0. That's just because we ended up only actually hiring 3.0 and we anticipated 3.5 when putting together the budget. And the same thing in the English anticipated a point five and, and ended up not hiring that position. Um, so I'll take any questions, but otherwise the process that was described too, I think we're anticipating the Board of Ed voting on this, you know, tonight was additional, just an information only. And then we would look at probably having the board vote on this, um, the FY 24 as well as the reallocation when we get to the January meeting. And then the, uh, BET, I don't know, um, when I was talking to Roland, we're not sure if they're going to handle ARP as part of the budget process or in coordination with the budget process, but um, either way, I think we would look to see maybe a January vote. And we also, um, again, we can set up a Q and A. We didn't get any questions on the first part. So I think we were emphasizing a focus on the budget, but we, you know, if you have any questions too, when we do ARP, before we get to that January meeting, we can do a similar Q and A like we did for the budget.
Laura?
Um, I'm just curious, why is it the BET is still involved in approving our S R funds?
I believe that the way that the fiscal year 24 appropriation would work is that the way the town, and I'll let Dr. Jones, if I get this wrong, but essentially the funding was received by the town from the federal government. The town appropriated into our accounts the first two fiscal years. And we do not have the appropriation for the final dollar amount in fiscal year 24. And once the board votes on it, I believe it may be more of a process question, uh, or, or process that we're following, but it's a fair question.
I, I just reached out to the State Department of Education, um, last year. And they were very clear that there's no pronouncement that, um, allocates these funds to the municipality. They go directly to the LEA.
I may defer.
Yeah, that, that is correct. Um, but as you remember it last spring, we, um, you know, it's, it was a lot of money. We were happy to go in front of the BET, let them know how we were spending the money. Um, you know, sharing that publicly, we did it here. We went through the BET as well. And basically, we did not, we weren't, we didn't want to go for 24 even last year because you've seen some of the changes. You know, it's hard to plan two and three years out. So we'll do it again and they'll just appropriate the last bit of those funds.
Well, Laura, that's a great question. And just my knee jerk reaction to that is since it is a large sum of money, the more eyes on it, the better. So I, I don't want to have the sole responsibility when it's such a, such a large amount of money to, to leave it to a smaller group. I kind of think that shedding that responsibility over a larger group might be something that is prudent. What do you think?
I think there's nothing-
But it wasn't, it wasn't a line item when, when it went before the B E T. It was the total amount of the appropriation, just to remember when the B E T, they basically, you know, how they go through the appropriation process, whatever is left, you know, the 2 million ballpark that's left, they would then approve for it to be put into our account.
It's more of an accounting maneuver.
Yeah, it was more, it was more of an accounting maneuver is my recollection from last spring.
Because there is nothing in the federal pronouncements that delegates the oversight of these funds to the municipality.
Thank you. Anyone else? Michael?
So Blaze, thanks, this is helpful. So this is a little different than what we're looking at a couple of weeks ago. So I just want to make sure that I, I understand it. So now if I'm reading this correctly, so in next year's budget, right? So we still have eight and a half F T E, right? That's paid for by S R. So if we're talking about, for lack of a better term, the fiscal cliff or, or positions that we still have to absorb on, we're going to be looking at for this time next year, we're down to eight and a half. Is that, is that a fair way of saying that?
Yeah, that's a fair way of saying that. We have, no dollars have been changed since the last time, but the, the actual F T E, the positions that are in there, we have eight and a half positions in fiscal year 24 that are on A R P.
And so, so I guess I'm wondering, and this might, this might be a Dr. Jones question. The, so how did we decide which positions to absorb this year as opposed to next year? So for example, like I see like special ed is, is still S R, ALP is not sold. So how did, how did we decide, for instance, just going down the list, how did we decide which, which were absorbing, which not? Like what, what, what went into that decision process?
So for instance, if you look at the social worker line, which is line 11, that's, that's coming directly from getting feedback from the principals that are in those buildings with social workers and really prioritizing with the elementary principals, what is the most important to you that we make sure we, you know, keep in the operating budget? And so that's why we built in two positions in next year's operating budget. The following year we'll be building in the three. But we also did that strategically so that the two salaries that we built in this year are almost equivalent to the three salaries we need to do next year based on where people are on the scale.
Everybody good? Okay, off to, oh, sorry.
I guess there is a question as far as process. So are we, regardless of what happens after us? So are we going, are we, so we're going to vote on this in, in January? Is that, is that what I heard? Or are we going to take a vote on fiscal year 24 S R? Or is this just a discussion item?
The goal would, I think, be to have the Board of Ed vote on the both reallocation, kind of the document before you. So some of the reallocation and then the fiscal year 24 use of the grant.
Good question. Well done. Now to action items. Blaze, you're still up. All right. Now, procedure wise, what do we make a motion, get it seconded, then discuss this item? Is that what we do?
You have to get it on the table for us to discuss it.
So do I have somebody who will put this on the table? That would be great.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve the proposed fiscal year 2024 operating budget of 182,165,266 dollars as presented.
I need somebody to second this. Ah, Karen Hirsch, thank you for seconding it. Okay, discussion.
Well, I'm happy to open. Do you want me to start?
Go ahead.
I mean, usually this is a much more contentious process, so Blaze, don't think that's always going to be this easy. Uh huh. But to be fair, you're in this situation because you guys did all the hard work upfront. So I think that there is a moment where we just need to again say, you know, Dr. Jones and you just, I know Doug and Doug and Doug to get it to 2.9%, which is just incredible in this inflationary environment to come in at that spot. But I, I just need to say it again. The only reason you were able to accomplish this is because of all the time we just spent on the American Rescue Plan. So I think that everyone needs to be reminded that this is, was not an easy task, but also would be impossible had we not had sort of a windfall funding from the federal government. And which I go back to again, was an incredible, because Greenwich did incredibly well in terms of our federal funding. Thanks to going back to school during COVID was a big part of it. And so I'm going to keep noting that. But I think that this is very impressive. I am a little worried admittedly that utilities or things like that could put us in a little bit of a scary place. But I guess that's where I lead to. What is your confidence in this budget? Are, what are the percentages? We're coming in for an interim next year if we approve this, things along those lines.
It's a tough question, but I think, you know, as Dr. Jones said, we, we would last, on December 1st, we wouldn't bring a reckless budget or one that put, you know, any of our programming at risk. I think that the American Rescue Plan is playing a critical role, as you mentioned, in where we're at, including as we've proposed in the fiscal year 24 reallocation, especially because of the funding that we had from fiscal year 22 original budget to addressing two of the, the critical areas, which were the facilities overtime, which we re-appropriated funding in to help address the concern and substitute pay. And which are the two areas that pose us the great, you know, two of the three areas that we presented as the greatest uncertainty. I am hoping tomorrow I will be meeting with the Office of the First Selectmen and the Purchasing Department and their energy consultant to hopefully get some decent news on energy that will make, I think, all of us feel a little more comfortable, but it's still a concern. But I think, you know, talking with Dr. Jones and Dan, for example, on the electricity, we know that we have a lot of work to do, but there's also a lot of opportunity in there. We're hopefully coming out of the pandemic, at least the emergency response. We have some capacity to address some of the low hanging fruit in terms of energy that just no one had the capacity to kind of, you know, really get to light usage and energy consumption when just trying to keep the buildings open and doing extra sanitation. So, you know, special ed is, is the wild card too. I mean, I think we built in, based on Stacy's information, an extra 1.2 million between out of district. You know, in this 2.9% includes an extra 1.2 million. We've talked at length on December 1st about the role A R P is playing with just in salary line, 1.7 million alone. You know, that, that's playing a key role in a 2.9% budget, so. Yeah, that's kind of my answer.
No, well said. I just needed to hear that. Thank you.
Anybody else? Then I will jump in for a second.
No, I will too.
Oh, well, let Christina, we'll let Christina go first.
Yeah, I just wanted to kind of echo Kathleen's concerns as well and Blaze's point of view. I think we've been extremely fortunate the last couple of years to have this federal funding. When our budgets, our, our, our increases from the town were less than most of our operating costs. So this is not a sustainable long-term practice, particularly if we want to keep working on curriculum and developing other and working on our special education. So while I understand we were able to pull it off this year, I'm deeply concerned for future years. But we, we will worry about those when the time comes. But I think there are definite risk factors. I hope we're not coming in at some point to talk about an interim need for operating money next year. So, but I, I thank you Blaze and Tony and the staff for really, as Kevin said, rolling up your sleeves and doing all the hard work so that we didn't do it for you. I am hopeful that perhaps the B E T and the members of the R T M are appreciative of the fact that we did come in at their guidelines and we'll, we'll take it easy on you when the Q and A comes from them. But so I will be like Joe, an optimist, but I, I do have concerns over this. But I still, obviously, it's the way we're going to go for most of us this year. Thanks.
Thank you, Karen.
Well, Christina sort of said pretty much what I was going to say, which is both, I, I, I just think it needs to be said time and time again. We've had budgets that have been really tight in the past. This one's a razor's edge thin, you know, and it truly will not be sustainable. We've been very lucky that we have had extra funding from R P. But, you know, I, I think it is exceptionally important for this board, our chair, who'll be leading us through, uh, through next year's budget process and other members of the town who are involved in budgeting to understand that this, this will not be sustainable going forward. We really do need to have a full discussion because we've been in a tight spot before. And I remember a few years back what cuts were being proposed and they were not satisfactory to, to most members of our parent and school community. So maybe before we get to that point next year, we can start opening those discussions. So this is, this is just a note for others to say that this really will not be sustainable going forward if we want to see improvements and to get ourselves to number one.
Yes, anyone else? Well, I'll conclude with Blaze, you and I spent some time in your office going over a lot of these topics and points. And the, the interesting thing I found, or the most interesting I found was the, the B E T who gave us the guidelines was fully aware of the funding that we had. They're fully aware of all the issues that made this a unique budget. So they are, we, we, according to all the conversations or what I deduced from our conversations, we made them aware that we're not going to have the same funding next time around. And so there's no mystery here, there's no secret. It might be harder for them if the number's higher, it always is. So if the number's higher for them, their guidelines are going to have to be higher. They understand if that's the case. So they understand the whole fed, federal funding and what happens there. So, uh, so I am optimistic going forward that we'll be able to work with the B E T and with your working in other departments of the town and your relationships that we talked about in our last discussion. And, and our hope to be very transparent with the B E T that we could achieve these things in a meaningful way going forward. The one comment I'm going to make, which is the, I do this sometimes to you Blaze, to hold you to things. Now, we have a responsibility to make sure that we put a reasonable budget forward that meets expectations, that we're not putting it, it in too low or, well, even too high, I guess you're not supposed to do. You have to advise us on this, you advising us that this is a reasonable and a responsible budget.
Given everything that we've talked about, yes.
Thank you. So let's vote on this, I'll call the question. All in favor of passing this, uh, this budget?
Aye.
That looks unanimous. Okay, eight zero. Now we go to the food service budget. How cool is that? And Blaze, you're still up, you getting tired?
No, this is good, I'm ready to roll.
Do you want me to make a motion to talk about it?
That's right. Can you make that motion for me, please?
Yep. Can I make a motion to approve the proposed fiscal year 2024 food services budget as presented on page 173 of the Superintendent's Fiscal Year 24 Budget?
Do I have a second? Laura, thank you, we have a second. Okay, any comments? Any questions?
I have a, I have a question for Blaze.
Go ahead, Christina.
Blaze, thank you. It's always nice to see if we'll actually not lose money on food services. But a lot of it seems to be attributable to the fixed charges item. And if you could just refresh our recollection about the 500,000, it's kind of under the expenses, what that relates to, because we took it from 500,000 down to zero.
Yeah, so there's, there's two elements here. And this is what I was going to talk about with food service. The first piece of it is, again, I would say that the federal funding is exclusively, well, I won't say exclusively, exclusively, because David has done a lot of work and he is on listening. And, you know, in case we have any questions specific for him, his team's done a lot of stuff with this. But again, federal funding is driving the reason that the fund balance looks the way it does. The reason that we have a strong fund balance is because of the federal funding. The universal free lunch program increased participation up to over 90%. So that obviously significantly returned funds from the federal government to the fund balance program. It also has two other effects where some of the federal funding that the school lunch fund gets is tied to participation. So now we will have a benefit of increased reimbursements be based on, you'll see like $200,000 increasing in reimbursements based on the increased participation and anticipating, you know, a higher reimbursement rate because you had more participation, more supplies. So there will be another benefit from that. So again, you have two key federal funding programs that are driving fund balance. You also had a significant contribution from the general fund to make up from the, before the federal funding was flowing and the onset of COVID that drove down the fund balance. So, you know, the budget then increased the contribution from the general fund to make up for that difference. And then the federal funding comes, you know, kind of afterward. And, you know, we're still actually anticipating federal, federal funding comes a few months later. So the effects of the federal funding are hitting the general fund or hitting the S fund, the school lunch fund now. And then the fixed charges are as a result, we, I think we will still be in the green, but you know, even, even with the fixed charges, but it's just a change in a temporary one-year change in accounting on benefits. So you'll see the results here, the anticipated result, and I think we'll make, make this very clear that the strength of the school lunch fund, though, right now, and this is something we've talked about at length, is as a result really of the federal funding. Now David is doing, is going to be doing, you know, a lot of work to try to get that and try to maintain a high participation rate. But the, you know, the participation rate, and we've been reimbursed for this, is over 90%. So that, that, that's a one-time, you know, one-time benefit. I do believe that the town is also, this is really an accounting difference, with the town is looking at moving the school lunch capital from the general fund capital line to the school lunch capital line. And that will also have an impact on fund balance if, if that does happen. It's not something we have built into the budget right now. That's something that would be a conversation if the town makes that move, but it is something that would have an impact on fund balance. Typically, the town contributes to the deficit. So it's really an accounting, you know, practice since they typically contribute to the difference. But as the strength of the program goes and hopefully potentially we see not a drop down to the, the 30 to 40% range where we were at pre-COVID. But hopefully we see, you know, David's putting in some programs and Anne, some programs to maybe make that transition from universal free lunch to keep participation, you know, up, you know, in excess of 50%. That would be, you know, good, the higher the participation rate, the more we drive down fixed overhead cost, so.
So the fixed charges are our fixed overhead that we believe, I'm just, that's why I'm just trying to get clarity over the 500, you know, this number's been 400, 500,000 and now we have it at zero for fiscal year 24. So that's a pretty dramatic, because so that number is now captured where? That's, I'm just trying to understand, or we're just not going to have those charge costs?
I, I'm going to have to take a look at that one. Yeah, off the top of my head.
Okay. No, no, just, okay.
Thank you, Christina. Anybody else with a question? If I see no questions, let's put it to a vote, all in favor, please raise your hand. Christina? You're in favor, they are, there's your hand. Okay, unanimous, eight zero. Okay, Kathleen, I think I'm getting the hang of this now. So approve the 2022, 2023 school calendar- Okay, Kathleen, I think I'm getting the hang of this now. So approve the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three school calendar as presented is the motion I am making. I need somebody to second that. Uh, thank you, Kathleen. All right, great. Dr. Jones, shall I hand it off to you?
Sure. Um, as part of our strategic plan and working with PTA, working with GEA, um, one aspect that we would like to make an adjustment in the calendar is to get in the second conference this school year, this current school year uh for elementary. And as you know, we've talked strategically that we would like to eventually build that up to middle and high. Um, but what we've done is by looking at the existing calendar, I mean, just note the changes for you. We've tried to keep it as simple as possible, not huge changes for our families. Um, on March thirteenth, uh, we were always noted on that full day is professional learning day. So it's already a day off, uh, so it's not a change for families, but we would like to, for our K-five uh host elementary uh conferences that full day. So again, the parents were already expecting that children weren't going to be in school, so that's not a huge change. And then on the fifteenth, we would have an early release for elementary only, just like we do uh in the conferences in December. And um, that's on Wednesday is when our teachers stay a little bit later after school, so they would finish their conferences on that uh late Wednesday. Again, as little impact as possible with being able to work with what works for GEA and also what works for our parents, trying to get the second conference. Um, the only other change on here is when, when you look at May, uh, May twenty-sixth, what has always been an early release. We were initially holding teachers um for professional development that afternoon. And we've really realized that once again, I mean, it's still, it's still a challenging year. And if you remember the last couple of years, uh, we built in a couple of early releases that were additional. So instead of doing that, uh, we're just proposing that that would be an early release uh for staff and they would leave and have that longer weekend um versus putting in another early release somewhere else.
Thank you, Karen Hirsch.
Uh, I have a, just a generalized comment and I, I feel a little embarrassed uh as a representative uh for my community in not noticing this when we approved the calendar uh initially and was brought to my attention by a, a couple of individuals in the community that um usually Passover falls uh right around Good Friday or while we're on break. This year it's actually two days ahead. Um, so the first night of Passover, um, yeah, sorry, I have it written down here. We have it um was uh, is Wednesday, April fifth, which is right before the, you know, Good Friday and our April break. Um, you know, I, it's might be too late. I don't, you know, not that we typically need, but oftentimes we usually do an early, in the past, we've done early releases when it's not been over break. Um, so you know, I know we're supposed to vote on this tonight, but I, I just sort of like to propose that uh somewhere. And it was just brought to my, it was recently brought to my attention by some uh, some individuals, because we seem to have all missed it.
There was some debate back and forth that our calendar has changed and I, I would have to go back and track the history over the last several years that we weren't, um, we definitely weren't out of school on that day because it came up for uh the twenty-three, sorry, twenty-four, twenty-five calendar we were talking about as well. So if we approve this tonight, I can certainly go back and do some research and see if um that's something that we've done over the last several years.
Oh, I wasn't suggesting it as a day off. I just, it happens, the, 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 it starts at sundown and oftentimes that means hours of very long hours of preparation. Um, Passover table is a really tough one to uh, to cook for. So um, I was just quite, the question would be uh as to whether we would consider doing that as a a little bit of an early release at all, but just you can feel free to look back in the history and, and, and come back to us with a suggestion. But I'm just putting it forward as, as it was asked of me by uh many in our community.
Maybe I could suggest that we uh, uh, look at this calendar as it stands and then readdress it and uh see if what we decide and figure that one out. If I could, once again, put the responsibility of that on your shoulders to work with Dr. Jones on that, so that we could share that with the rest of the board. Would, would that be something you'd be willing to help us with?
Well, I think once she just looks into it, she can send us a little email as a board and.
Or that, that's fine too. Okay. Uh, I don't see any other questions. Oh, I'm sorry, one more. Uh, Karen?
So again, I had a couple of quick, quick questions. So um, I know this was an additional thing that I think PCG had suggested that we do is add the additional conference. So I guess the question I have is, is there a monetary component with respect to the conferences? It's just building in the time for them. Okay. Um, and the only reason I, I mention it is um, I, I'd be curious after this year, what the teacher feedback is and how that how that affects their planning, their day, their, their planning and how they have to prepare for that. And the only reason I mention it is I, I'd appreciate their feedback, but I, I know as a parent and all the rest of us on the board as a parents, when you need to talk to a teacher and you have a question regarding uh your performance of your child in their class, I, I think all, most parents feel free to, to reach out and get instant feedback. Uh, and I, I'm happy to report that anytime that I've ever reached out to get instant feedback, I, I get instant feedback. I also get, you know, phone calls and pre-arranged meetings before school. So I'm curious how, what the teacher reaction and the general community reaction would be to this added component. Because I, I do feel that our teachers already put themselves out there in a way to make them readily accessible. So I'm just curious as to that point. The second thing is, one, is this conference going to be something that parents can opt out of, that they don't need to participate? I guess if they don't sign up, they don't have to go. Also, is a remote option going to be available? I note that because it is in the middle of the March and if we have a good ski season, someone might try to bank on the last possible three-day weekend. And I'm just trying to keep in mind for all the skiing families.
Um, so between the parents and the teachers, um, be- between the parents and the teachers, one of the reasons I have not brought like next year's calendar and requested a change is we want to get through this and see uh what the feedback is. But one, this really was pushed, it really was, it came up more through the PTA. Uh, it wasn't part of the special education action plan, but PTA felt strongly that this would be a real benefit for parents. Um, we had one or two buildings, actually, last year, the year before, we had three plus cost Cobb used to do it. So we had a couple of buildings that were doing it anyway. And so the, as the parents were discussing, they really liked it and felt like it was helpful. Um, but one of the kind of partnership pieces between the parents and the teachers is that the teachers generally in the spring do really long comments. It takes them a long time to write them on the reports. We don't get overwhelming feedback that that is as helpful is sitting down personally with the teacher. And so they're not going to do the long comment. And so that, they were, uh, several of the teachers, um, obviously that were in part of this discussion, were very excited about that component because they actually will gain some time back. You know, to plan for instruction because they're not having to do these really long comments, but they are having to obviously plan, you know, for face-to-face. Um, the remote option would be there. We, anytime a parent wants to meet via Google, Google Meet, our teachers do that now. Um, that's just kind of become second nature to offer that. Um, and again, for parents that want to dial in from work, you know, to meet with the teacher, that's super easy. So we will make it, you know, as easy as we, as we can. And of course, it's optional for parents. Elementary tend to love to see their teachers. Um, so you usually have a pretty big turnout.
I also have a comment, Joe.
Well, let's go with Karen first and Christina, you follow Karen.
Mine's just a comment and, and I kind of wanted to tag on to what Karen was uh, was saying as well. Um, because I, I know how time-consuming uh it is for our educators to really sit and prepare for those parent-teacher conferences. They really, they really dig in to, you know, make sure that they're a fruitful conversation between themselves and, and a parent for their students. So if we are going to attempt to try to do this for this first year as a pilot type program is how I would look at it. Um, I would also like to second what Karen was saying and, and look for feedback from both parents and from our educators. I know we can probably put it into our year-end survey. I know, uh, and I, it's not for me to direct GEA, but I know GEA often sends out their year-end survey to, to their educators as well. And um, you know, i- i- if that is something you're planning to add on feedback, I'd love to be able to hear what our educators think uh about, about that as well. Um, if they found it beneficial, um, you know, versus the time involved. I, I think it's important for us to be able to, to, to hear that. So I'm seconding that and just.
Christina?
Um, yeah, just um, to Tony's point, this, the elementary schools that piloted it, is my understanding, found it to be very successful. But more importantly, it is actually under state law required that we have two flexible parent-teacher conferences every school year. So whether i- i- it's in section ten to twenty-one F of the statute. Um, and it's also in our teacher contract starting next in beginning fiscal year twenty-four, but just so everyone's aware of that.
Michael?
Oh, so let me, let me make sure, uh, Dr. Jones, let me make sure I understand. So is there any, um, on the Monday to thirteenth? Um, so that would be conferences all day or there'd be any professional learning that day?
So the K-five teachers who generally have twenty-odd students would be doing conferences. Your media specialists, people who really don't have a lot of, you know, parents that want to come and meet, will have planned professional development.
Okay. And then the fifteenth, March fifteenth, but where are the eyes of March? And May twenty-sixth, both of those were professional learning, but now one will be conferences and one will just be early release?
So the fifteenth is a brand-new early release in order to have that second day for conference for elementary. That's new. Um, the May early release was already on the calendar as an early release for students, but we were holding our teachers.
For professional learning?
Yes.
So we're, so I'm just worried that, so it sounds like we're, we're, so we're eliminating, I guess, this is eight hours or so between March thirteenth and May twenty-sixth of uh professional learning um time. Um, I just, I guess I'm, I'm concerned that we're not robbing Peter to pay Paul if we're looking at um new curriculum, literacy curriculum in the elementary school and whatnot. Or do we, are we sure we don't, we don't need this time um for, for, for that kind of, for that kind of other strategic work?
I think we've done so much um professional development because of all the new curriculum and everything that we've been rolling out that we're using our Wednesdays much more effectively, uh, where the teams are coming together, they're talking about the foundations, they're talking about um Hagerty, if they're, you know, implementing that. Um, the language arts teachers are coming together, use, utilizing time that really is built in the calendar, I think, more effectively. And um, you know, we'll be taking it off. I think it's also a day because it's, it's May, you know how teachers are in May? And it's right before Memorial Day. And you know, it's tough to get people fired up about staying for professional development. So I think what that does even mentally for the teachers to know, we're trying to value their time um and work with them to try to release some of that pressure um that they face. So I think that will help spawn some of the other learning that will take place um just to help teachers.
We good? Time to vote. All in favor? Put your hand up, please.
Aye.
Looks like we unanimous again. How cool is this? Okay, we are now the uh Board of Education meeting calendar.
Oh, Launa contract next.
Oh, I didn't take it off. I'm sorry. Let me put that out, put this on here. I'm sorry. Let's get it right. Uh, yes, the, the BOE Launa contract, Dr. John.
No, wait, the meeting cal- no, no, our meeting calendar is next. He was.
I'm sorry, I messed you up.
Yeah, yeah, that's okay. Kathleen is trying to ambush me, so she looks better as a chair.
Exactly.
Yes. All right. So we have the Board of Education meeting calendar. Uh, Kathleen, you've got to have to make that motion now because you tried to mess everything up.
Well, it's, what's funny is that I thought I had told uh Michael Antonasi to put this on the consent calendar, which is why I was surprised to have it here. So now I don't have it. So where is it?
Motion. Do you want me to make it?
Karen, you make that motion, please.
Motion to approve the twenty twenty-three to twenty-twenty-four Board of Education meeting calendar as presented.
I'll second that. Do we have any conversation about this?
I do.
Here.
Please, uh, let Christina go first, then Kathleen, you'll follow.
Um, I thought when we last talked about this, we talked about going not to three meetings in September, but to two. And to increase the size, I mean, that's my recollection. We, I thought we kind of had a less is more approach to have our retreat maybe include capital and retreat items. Um, and then we'll still have our business meeting. Perhaps my recollection is fuzzy with my cold, but um, I, I think I see Michael Joseph as Cody nodding their heads with me. So um, I think if we take that September fourteenth meeting off, was what we had believed we wanted to do.
I do remember the comment less is more and that does stick in my mind about this. Uh, so uh, uh, I guess what we have to do is then alter this document and then make it the same. How, how do we do this now? Please.
Well, let everyone, let other people make, let other people make their comments first.
If, if that's what we want to do, then I, I can just withdraw the motion and we can.
We could, but could I make a comment first?
Of course you can.
So the only, I, now I recall, I remember that also there being more of a conversation around the whole location. And then I think we came up with the idea that we would have um, uh, people potentially, since we'd keep it at Central Middle School, we would have um the principals from the different schools come here so that they could present their school. But I also, and Michael Antonasio, you can correct me if I'm wrong, sometimes it's easier to remove a meeting than to add a meeting. So there might have been the concept to keep this on here and then not have to notice a new meeting, but at like the seventh or in the summer to cancel the meeting. Because believe me, it is hard to get eight people to that. And then you have to notice an amount of time that you have a little bit more flexibility here as you do your planning to then just sort of cancel one.
So your suggestion is to leave it on here and then leave the date in place with the expectations of us as we get closer to that time, eliminating it?
That's what I would say.
But that seems a little weird from an agenda planning point of view, like if we're having a meeting with nothing on an agenda.
I suspect you'll have plenty on the agenda on the beginning of September, but.
But as we.
Probably true.
Christina, I guess as we cancel the meeting, we just defer everything off to the following meetings.
Well, but the thing is, the two retreats are really retreat matters. They're not matter, like a capital retreat is not something we'd talk about in a public meeting. I mean, we, it's a public meeting, but not in a business meeting.
Yeah, I, I think that might be part of the, I think that might be clearer here if we label them as such, because you've got three meetings there between the seventh, the fourteenth and October fifth that say board retreat. And the reality is that one is the Capitol Summit. Um, one historically has been more um achievement-focused. The um, so, so I don't know, so I, that, how we, how we label these might be, might, might, might make things clearer. I think the other thing that nobody's going to like to hear, um, realistic, like to Kathleen's point about um scheduling other meetings and things like that. It, it probably behooves us to um identify uh a July or August date, the um, especially if we're identifying meetings just to hold. Because the reality is the, certainly this summer, we needed them. I think the history shows that uh more summers than not, we've needed at least a meeting in the summer. So putting a date on there is probably only would make our lives simpler, in all honesty.
I would say, I know we don't get, usually get the um academic, you know, updates, uh, for, you know, state testing and all that stuff that early in September. So that's why the, the achievement uh summit, you know, the achievement retreat that we tend to do is usually comes a little later based, based on that. Yeah, I'm just saying, yeah. Unless we're using that for uh.
I'll withdraw my objection and we'll leave the three on for Septa- yeah, I'll withdraw my objection to the three in September to Kathleen's point, if you want to do that. Um, Michael Joseph, I totally hear you. I just think it's hard because none of us really, some of us don't know what our summers totally look like yet. So you could agree to a date now and have no idea if it's a good date or not.
I, I would, I would argue that's why it makes it easier. It's because we, all of us don't know our vacation plans. If we have a date, it might make, not that we have to schedule around it, but it might make things easier.
Okay, so uh, are we gonna shelf this or are we gonna go with the motion and vote on this? I'm not sure what we've uh deduced here. Uh, Michael, you had said something about the summer meeting?
Do we?
So then, well, I guess we should.
I, I would, I, I would, I would make a suggestion to Michael Joseph's point that perhaps we make a point, we pick a point in time later in the spring to pick a summer meeting date, should one be needed when there's a little more clarity? Like, you know, if you're sitting in April and you're picking a date in July, by then you have a little more clarity. Um, and we can leave this as is.
We haven't typically had to have summer meetings except for the past year or two. And I was gonna say, the only thing I could see, I mean, there's certainly things that'll be coming down the pike, but it might be things for building committees and we probably won't know what they'll need and when they'll need it until much later. So to add it now would be difficult, I think. You know, that's what I'm saying. You know, that's what I'm saying, but we, you guys won't know until you're closer to a date where, that you know you need to meet and have an approval for something. So to put it on now and then find out you don't need it, or you needed a week earlier or a week later is, you know, not beneficial.
So we'll alter something in the future if we decide, but right now we'll vote on this. Okay, all in favor, please put your hand up and Christina, say aye.
Aye.
Ah, you're tricking me there. You almost didn't make it eight zero. Another eight zero. Thank you. Okay, BOE Launa contract. I'm gonna try to read this with my dyslexia, numbers and things jerk or juggle around, but I'm gonna try. I'm gonna make a motion to ratify a one-year extension of the agreement between the Greenwich Board of Education and Local one thirty-six of Laborers International Union of North America AFL-CIO based on the terms discussed in executive session. Do I have a seconder? Ah, Karen Kowalski will second. Okay, do we have any discussion? Then we, hearing no discussion, we'll go straight to a vote. All in favor of this contract, please. Christina, say aye. Everyone else, raise your hand.
Aye.
So we have one, do we, do we have a no? Is there a no? Do we have an abstain? Uh, how, look at you. All right, one abstention, so we're seven, zero, one on that one. Okay, strategic plan. Michael?
So I would like to make a motion to approve the strategic plan goals document as presented.
Karen Hirsch will second it. Do we have discussion?
So I will turn it over to Dr. Jones in a moment. So the Strategic Plan Committee met again for our eighth meeting last week. We took the feedback from the board, from our, from the last meeting, and we went back and we made some revisions that I'll let Dr. Jones speak to in, with, with specificity. I think the, the one thing to, to note here and the key to, to keep in mind here that this remains the, the goals document, right? So our idea here is, as I mentioned last time, this is kind of our North Star to, as we try to prioritize the goals we're working towards over the next five years. As, as we attempt to more fully realize the vision of the graduate that ties to ground everything we do here so that we can become the number one district in any of these other rankings. The, as we meet these goals, I think these, in very ways, these, these quantifiable goals, they, we'll, we'll see that. So I'll let Dr. Jones to talk about some of the, some of the feedback we. Oh, yeah, so I should mention, my apologies, I should, thank you. The, I should mention, so the board, so we were, our committee was unanimous on goals one through five. Was, we voted two, one on goal six, so that's certainly a matter we need to discuss this evening.
Dr. Jones?
Um, I'll just cover a couple of the highlights. First of all, some of you had just pointed out some text changes where maybe something hadn't been edited last time. So we made sure that we adjusted that. If you look at, for instance, on goal two, mastery of reading, we had brought a version forward where the, the A had actually dropped off, which was the student will meet their individual growth goal. We made sure that was always intended to be on there. So we've corrected that, so it shows back up on the document. The other thing that we, the board had discussion about is the success metrics specifically in reading, where if you look at that twenty twenty-seven on the far right-hand side, again, I'm talking about goal two. That was at one hundred percent. And, you know, we talked about, is the goal really obtainable? Or is it a goal that we know we can't meet? So we've gone in and tried to reset those to be more obtainable for our students and for our schools. So the other thing that I would note is on goal six, we did go in and make some adjustments to goal six and tried to not just have it on as much climate focus, but also on the professional learning, extending, extending the support for teachers. The climate portion is still in there. But again, it's also talking about recruitment, onboarding, support and retention. So we've tried to enhance that goal quite a bit. I think that's, I'll, I'll leave it there because most of the changes were, when you get to the, the other pages, like page four or five, again, it was just making the language on those.
Right.
Match what's on the sheet.
Do you want to just remind us, Tony, about what the, the growth metric, the, the growth goals for, for, in goals two and three? When we talk about every student's growth goal, I think that was because we got some question, I got some questions this week.
So on the actual growth goal, the state of Connecticut has a new, has a new reporting structure for every single student. And we actually, they set a target based on wherever a student is. If they're, you know, at the, there's forty percentile, then their growth goal may be to get to fifty or fifty-five. If you're a ninetieth percentile student, the growth goal may be to get to ninety-six or ninety-five. But every single student has a growth goal. And then we get scored not only on, did the students hit their growth goal? What was the percentage of the students who hit the growth? And then they also go in and look at what is the percentage for each student that they got towards their goal? So if they were supposed to grow ten percent and they only grew five percent, they're also getting a score for that. So did they almost meet their goal? Or, you know, were, were they flat? Maybe they actually scored very high on the actual reading assessment, but they didn't actually show growth. And if they didn't meet their growth goal, even if it was one percent or two percent, they didn't meet it. So they are doing that for every student that sits for our state assessment. So it is very, very detailed information that we're getting on our students.
Karen?
And I would just like to add, the document, well, many of you probably saw ginormous binder sitting in front of three of us last week. But just so that, you know, once these goals, if, if they are approved by the board, then we will be working on that action plan to get, to make this not just goal, a goals document, but a strategic plan. It's, yeah, fishbone driver diagrams, all the fun stuff. It just makes it a lot easier for our administration to actually put forward a feasible action plan once they're approved as opposed to revising and revising. And we got all of our school improvement plans at our last meeting that we're still digging through and, and a ton of other stuff that really does go towards the fact that these will be smart goals, that we, they will be timed. We will have, you know, accountability on those and, and other things that we, we need to make sure that this is a, an actual plan. But it's, it's hard to actually put that all into writing until the goals are approved. So I just wanted to put that out there, because I know those are the questions that I've been asked.
Any more questions? Well, oh, sorry, sorry, Cody.
I've, there's some comments. I, I think it would make sense to move goal number one lower. This is a little silly, I guess, but when you think about the real estate of like what our top goal is, that's something that impacts, even though it's important, it impacts a much lower of, fewer number of students because we already have such a high graduation rate. Whereas the growth metrics, which I think are awesome, affect everyone. And I think just emphasizing, you know, reading and math being our two core biggest focus things, just from a real estate standpoint of, those are goals one and two. And I, I, because I think if you're a parent and you look and what is, what does the Greenwich School System care about? Okay, I'm not worried about, you know, ninety-five percent of kids right now, that's not an issue. Whereas the growth metric is so cool because it applies to everyone. It's like every single person here, our focus and our, our primary number one strategic goal is to have you on track. So that's one recommendation. A second one is, I think we should consider combining four, five and six. They're all basically the same thing, which is kind of happy constituents. And it's just three surveys. And if you did that, you actually could have our goals kind of rounded out really nicely into four simple things, which is what I think is, you know, there's, there's an appeal to the, the more you can condense this stuff. And then the last comment slash question is, I just don't know. Uh, or I'd love to know why like ninety or ninety-two or eighty or eight, or seventy-five, like looking at the columns and the reading and writing all the way to the right, why those are the right benchmarks? Like, I, I don't. You know, if there's other, if there's something we could point to where we say like, like, why is mastery ninety-two percent versus ninety or ninety-four? And maybe it's a little bit of just finger in the air, but if there is any thoughts on why that isn't higher or lower or whatever, I would, it would just be, if we're gonna vote on a target number, it'd be nice to have context of why that's the right, right number. I think that's all I, all, all of my thoughts.
Michael, I guess that goes to you. Okay. Thank you. Thank you for correcting me, Dr. Jones.
Sorry, and, and it's not something that we have to address necessarily in this meeting. Oh, yeah, well, I'll vote against it, obviously, but the, I'm saying, and I would encourage everyone else to unless, unless you come, came into this saying, oh, I know exactly why these numbers are the way they are, then I would encourage you to vote against it as well because I don't think there's a rush on this because once we have it baked, we will live with it for a very long period of time.
Well, I think we should discuss it and find out if the general consensus is that we, because we have the option to shelf it and readdress it. If the, exactly, if the, if the consensus is that way. So can, can we have a response to Cody's, Cody's observations? Dr. Jones, I believe it was passed off to you.
Um, I, I understand what you're saying on the reordering. I think that makes a lot of sense, actually, to put reading and math right at the top. I think that's a great idea. It may be hard for us to combine four, five and six. I mean, just simply because they are three different areas, but I understand what you're saying. They're all, we could reword it, but I think you would just end up with a big, long, a big, long goal instead of the more succinct, shorter ones. But we could certainly, we could certainly think about that. I would say from the metric standpoint, we're, we're really trying to look at where we are right now and trying to set reasonable targets. And, you know, part of it is, we've done a lot of, for instance, in reading, a lot of implementation. We have new programming, so like foundations. This will be the very first year where kids will have had foundations for multiple years hitting third grade. So we don't know yet what kind of impact that we're hoping that we will see. So when you look at that like ninety and ninety-two, it has to do with where they started. So if you look at grade four, they started a little bit lower. And so we're trying to again have a realistic target. They finish a little bit lower, but again, that's because we're trying to have a reasonable growth metric to get where we want to be. And really, if you can be anywhere between, you know, eighty and ninety percent, that is pretty phenomenal. So we've still aimed high, having it at ninety, because if you start to think about the different pockets of students that need to not only make growth and achievement, whether that's our EL students, whether that's our special education students. You know, we have students on individualized plans that now are running at fourteen percent for just special education alone. That doesn't count all of the other challenges where students have some gaps that we're trying to close that are pretty large. So it's really looking at it over time and what we think is reasonable. But when you start a plan, I know one thing the Strategic Committee has talked about is that we could change a metric if we feel like, like, like the growth data is brand new for us. This is, I mean, we were in COVID, so they didn't do it. We got it one year. This is our second year to actually have it. So we don't know over time what it's actually going to look like. So we can always go back in and reset this if we're either too high or too low. I think we just have to be careful that if we're not seeing the growth, we're not trying to just take it down because we're not seeing the growth. So we have to really be able to look at what are all the triangulation of the different data sets that we use? And is something happening on the state assessment and the way they're measuring growth where we just didn't interpret it in the same way because it is so new?
Karen, did you have a comment?
I did.
Thank you.
So everybody knows I don't like goal six in this document, so I'm not gonna reiterate that. We've had that discussion. But I will emphasize for the time, I think it's very important, just don't like it here. I do like Cody's suggestion, however, in how we take some of these goals, particularly maybe goal four and six, and see if there's a way to combine that, because I think that they are perhaps somewhat, I could find a relationship with that. I would suggest keeping goal five separate, as I do think the increased student sense of belonging is important on its own, because I do think that provides, you know, if a student feels like they belong at school and they want to be at school, it will, that there, you know, there are studies that show that they will excel, they will engage, they will be more, they will have a much more successful academic career during their K through twelve experience. So I, I do think that goal is important, but from a community standpoint and teachers, I was okay leaving the community component to this. But if there was a way to combine goals four and six, although I'm not sure how you would do it, I might reevaluate my thinking on this, but right now with goal six, I'm a no.
Kathleen?
So I guess.
And if I could go after Kathleen.
You got it, Christina.
Okay. I mean, I know that you guys have been working on this for like so many months. Um, and that you've asked us for feedback many times. So I'm cognizant of that. And so it's like launching a software product, right? Like, I just feel you could always, there's always another version. Sometimes it's like, get it to market, guys, because I need it to go to market and then we can tweak as we go. I'm a little bit like that on this one. I, I do have to say, I like the idea of moving math and reading to goal, like moving that up. So I'd be inclined to sort of make a motion to just move those up and then pass this thing tonight. But I'm just throwing that out there.
Interesting suggestion. We'll go to Christina now for her, our comment or questions.
Yeah, no, no, I, I, I agree with the, the comment that Cody made about math and reading being first. You know, make those one, two, and then graduation rate is three. And then our first page is really about academics. And then goals four, five and six would be the, the, the less quantifiable kind of things. I, I think they are three separate and distinct things. I don't think they can get lumped together. And I think if you ask people in the industry, I think Karen just said, you know, student sense of belonging is a standalone. It's important unto itself. Family engagement and staff environment are two completely different animals. I don't see how they can be combined, but I think they're both laudable worthwhile goals. So to me, I would leave those as is. And I think in terms of the numbers and the metrics, I think you guys have asked us for a lot of feedback. I think we're using our current numbers as our starting point for success and, and moving forward every year. And I agree with Kathleen that, you know, what is it? Perfection is the enemy of getting anything done. So, you know, if, if she wants to make a motion to, you know, you could basically just flip flop, you know, one or put three in one switch and then reading stays two or to pick kinds of people care about reading versus math, which is one, two, three. I think, I think that we should try to get this process moving along because it's really stagnated. And in large part because we all haven't given comments and feedback to the committee, which I think they've done a ton of work. And they need to be allowed to move the process along and help Dr. Jones and the staff work on the action plan. So those are my thoughts.
Just, I gave my comments and email two meetings ago to Mike, so it's not like I brought these up just now. They've been out there for a while.
Aaron?
Well, I, I hadn't seen him, so I, I, they're new to me tonight. But I will agree that I, when we first looked at it, I don't think we were looking at it as goal number one was our biggest, most important goal. But I, I definitely see from where your, your perspective as, as to how that it, it looks that way, and, and I think it's a really good suggestion. And I would suggest that we just move number two to number one, number three to number two, and number one down to number three. With regards to four, five and six, I, I think that the point is page, page one is, is solely focused, I think, on, on student academics directly. is solely focused, I think, on on student academics directly. Um, and then number four, five and six are are those other, like I said, sort of slightly more amorphous uh, uh, data points, but uh, family and community engagement. Um, and and student sense of self and positive working environment, they're they're very different pieces. Um, and especially if you start to look through uh, the pieces, what goes behind those, especially if you look at the school improvement plans and whatnot, they they are, you could say that they they fall into another bucket, but they're all vastly different and how you get to the success, success metrics and goal, uh, overall goal uh, are vastly different. And so to try to combine them, I think would not necessarily be beneficial, except to make it look combined on a piece of paper, because you're still going to be doing the same things. And so it makes it a lot easier, I think, especially for for the community uh, and the board, when you're looking at them separately, because we may be focusing specifically on goal number five every single year, whereas goal four, we jump so far ahead in year one, that year two, we're only focused on, we're not as focused on that as we're as goal number six, for instance. And so it gives the board a better opportunity to be able to discuss and divide also when we're we're talking about uh, goals that are uh, shorter and to the point as opposed to a bigger amorphous one. That's just my 10 cent uh, opinion and putting it in there.
Thank you. Uh, well, I I summarize here, I'm I'm hearing Karen Kowalski has issues with something which I I certainly like to hear every voice and and have every voice uh, add to a finished product. Uh, so I don't think she's satisfied with this. Cody had suggested some changes that he had gestured he was going to vote against this. If uh, and Kathleen suggested possibly moving stuff around and changing the motion. I I'll ask the uh, the head of this committee, do you think by changing around something in a motion, uh, you could satisfy uh, most of the people and aspire for an eight O vote here?
So I think the um, it sounds like based on the the conversation and um, I think Kathleen's point was uh, was valid. The um, um, there, there is an urgency here. At the same time, um, once this is passed, it is very much uh, um, carved in stone a little bit. Um, so I I think something as important at this as this, the um, I think Kathleen's, you know, I think Christina was the one who made the point last time. Last time was really the first time we as a board had a real substantive uh, conversation um, about the goals. So I think we're having another one tonight. Um, I think it would be wonderful if we can get to eight O on something like this. I think that is, I think that is important. I don't know. We're we're clearly not there. The um, um, so I I don't, um, and it doesn't sound like just moving around one, two and three get us there. So if we think um, that there's um, validity in going back and taking um, um, another look at how we're structuring some of these goals, the um, in in the spirit of reaching um, a broader consensus. I don't think that's necessarily the 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 worst thing in the world, particularly since, you know, the work continues. It's not like, you know, I think someone made the point. We're obviously still working on, the district is still working on supporting community engagement and increasing student sense of belonging. They um, I think it's more around how we're how we're structuring some of the plan. Um, from a um, next step process, if we're thinking about some of the work to come around action plans and change ideas um, and driver diagrams, um, there is um, um, less goals make, there is, there is, there is um, validity to the idea of of fewer goals, the um, because you know, we have six goals, that's six action plans, you know, we have five goals, that's if we have four goals, that's four action plans. The um, maybe that fourth action plan is a bigger one. So but that might be something, um, that's a new concept tonight that might be worth talking about in all honesty.
So some, I guess withdrawing a motion would probably be the uh, uh, the prudent thing to do.
I I don't know, just as a member of the committee, I mean, we've been doing this for so long. We can keep at it and keep at it and keep at it, and we're going to come back every single time. And there's still going to be somebody who has a frustration with some piece. We at some point need to move this forward so that we can get to the actual work in the meat of the plan. I I maybe it's me and I'm happy to make, I I do think Cody's suggestions of renumbering and ordering the first three is is a really valid and a a great point, actually. Um, but I just don't necessarily, maybe it's me, I just don't see what we're going to get done by going back in and then rewording and redoing this again and again and again, because I we've been doing this for months. And uh, maybe it's me, but I'd like to, I'd like to be able to get to the next step. But it's been three years of of this for at least for Karen and I, so maybe, maybe we can jump for, I'd like to jump forward and focus on the the next steps. That's just me.
Well, I'd like, if I may, just a second, then Laura, you follow through uh, when I'm done. I just don't feel enough support and this is such an important document. I think that consensus is really, really important in this document. And don't get me wrong. I do appreciate the amount. I could never do this sort of work, the work you guys are doing. So I have to appreciate it. Like when I spoke to Michael on this, on this topic during the week, I I said, please guide me through this because this is your field of expertise. It's so far from mine. So he was able to give expert advice that this is a good document. Uh, but the other involvement or other comments from others around us, and it's an important document. And it's something that we should see more consensus on. Uh, Laura?
Oh, I was going to express support for the renumbering. I think that makes sense, but the the content to me is um, really impressive and I like the changes that we've made. And if I ever have to look at another fishbone graph, I don't know what I'll do. So I'm I'm uh, I'm prepared to vote in favor of it. I love the renumbering idea, but beyond that, I think the substance is here and I really do like the um, um, positive work environment for our teachers and staff, because they are important stakeholders.
Kathleen?
So I'm gonna, do you want to, I'm gonna amend the motion and then see.
Okay, you'll let it, it's your motion.
Yeah, so someone has to withdraw it. Can you?
Motion withdrawn.
Okay, so I'm gonna make a motion to approve the 2022, 2027 strategic plan as amended as follows with goal number one, graduation moving behind goal three mastery of mathematics, so that now goal one is mastery of reading, goal two is mastery of mathematics, goal three is graduation rate and so forth.
Can you just send that to me when you're done? Because I
I need a second.
I'll second it.
We have a second.
So I'll just give a comment. Obviously, we've already discussed this, but um, I think we should start off 2023 with a strategic plan. I think Cody made a great suggestion tonight. I think it brought um, a few of us hopefully across. I think this plant, this um, committee has done a lot of good work. And I think, um, you know, perfection is the enemy of good. What is it of good? So um, I'd say we, I call the question.
Okay. You can, well, we could say, no, we don't accept.
What's on the motion to amend versus person's a motion to wait? Or did you?
Well, we have another comment. We have another comment first. He withdrew. So Cody, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, I don't, I get the, don't let perfection be the enemy of the good, but there's, it's something to Mike's point that will be set in stone. This is only the second time we've had a substantive conversation about it. Even, I don't want to speak for Mike, but even Mike sounded like, you know, it's not, oh, hey, this should be passed right now and it's not gonna uh, slow down anything we're doing. I think there's reasonable case to be made. I don't mind making the case, um, uh, you know, in email to the committee or something about some ways to consolidate this, but I just think once we have it, it's, we're so stuck with it that uh, spending, having one more meeting, I feel like that's a good, a good trade off, even if you told me that not a single thing would change in that or put the effort into changing it, it's it's still would feel a lot better about pressure testing a few more of these items, one, you know, for one more round.
Hey, Michael, on the last comment, I suppose, or?
Yeah, I I, yeah, I don't know if um, uh, no one wants to get this over the finish line more than I, I assure you, but I don't know if um, that behooves us to to rush the matter. The um, I think if we, if we need to, if we need to talk about this for another month, I don't think it is, as the chair, I don't think of the of the subcommittee, I don't think it's the end of the world in all honesty.
And Kathleen, I
So I guess I'll withdraw it. I mean, if he's not supportive.
Please, because I gave my support to Michael uh, because of the work he's done on this. And if he wants to withdraw it, I'm not going to support that. No offense, I'm not supporting the motion. So you withdraw the motion?
Yeah, I guess, right.
Okay, so let's uh, put it on shelf it and uh, and move forward.
I'm not sure I'm voting for the revised one in 2023, though.
Okay.
Yeah, I
Duly noted.
Got, got, I've got to say, I'm I'm just putting my comment out there that I'm frustrated because we've been looking at this almost exact document in this order with all of this stuff on it, except for some changes and wording since some point in the mid, mid to early October. I think it was the first time we saw it was mid October as a board. So you know, it it's just frustrating because it's now the, you know, mid to end of October, it's two months plus. So.
Noted. Uh, thank you. All right, uh, we'll move on to the uh, agenda plan discussion. Uh, obviously, we're going to add uh, the strategic plan to the uh, Jan 19th meeting. Not on that one. Uh-oh. Okay, what what one should we add it to?
Why can't we add it to January 19?
Uh, I'm going to be really honest. I think for staff, it it's going to be very difficult. I mean, I I can't even begin to tell you how many hours they've spent on this and we really need to get a lot of input from this committee. And and maybe the board wants to think about a a working meeting so that the full board can actually dig into this because we've tried so many different iterations and we can't get a document where, you know, everyone feels good about it. So I I think it would, it would be better to have a discussion first on 19th, especially given that we don't get back, you know, most people are off for a week. We don't get back until the second, you have to post things, we're trying, you know, that Friday before. It just doesn't give very much time at all.
If I could make a suggestion on that point, because I do think that that's worthwhile to to do that, given the importance of this document. And I'm wondering if we can add it to our February 2nd board retreat where we talk about, um, we have our special ed update.
Yay, then somebody read my mind.
Okay, so we're not going to add it on the 19th, then we're going to add it on the Feb 2nd where it's already added. How convenient.
And you know what? It should be added as an action. I don't know if we, can we do it as an action item? Because then if we've resolved it on February 2nd, then we can vote.
Well, we will.
Because if it's only listed, if it's only listed for information, we can't vote on it.
Okay, we'll try to change that to an action item. Okay, any more uh, uh, adjustments to our uh, our meeting agenda plan? Hearing none. Uh, do I have a motion, Laura? We have a motion to adjourn. Do we have a second? Uh, all in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
I think that's everybody. Thank you very much.
You're well done, Joe.